Okay, we'll call this meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I will ask everybody to please either turn your cellphones down or turn them off, thank you. And with that, Bridgette, if you do roll call, please.
Council members Jensen, Furman, Lindquist, and Bloomquist are present along with attorney squires and various staff members.
Okay, then we have the consent agenda. Nobody's asked to have anything pulled, so we have the claims. And from November 25th to December 8th, we have eighth, we had $168,469.93 payroll as of November 21st was $69,515.05 in liquor store expenditures for resale, $90,157.06. We have a resolution for a budget transfer. We have the minutes of October 27th, regular session, the minutes from November 6th, work session, the minutes from November 20th, the work session. We have a transient merchant license, a custom remodelers, a staffing service contract agreement, amendment for Affordable Care Act, and authorized to close session on labor negotiations. With that is our motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public hearings, non committees and commissions, planning commission, go ahead.
At the last meeting, we tabled the discussion on the planning staffing. You remember that the planning commission had requested the council consider looking at other options for planning services. We currently have a contract with Shisago County for 20 hours a week. And so that prompted the county staff and I to look at it. The contract that we have, typically contracts will have, you know, the term, but it continues unless one party or the other terminates. You requested that Jay look at that contract. It does have a hard end date of December 31st. So the county has drafted a first amendment to that contract, and Jay did get an opportunity to look at it. It would extend the contract, but it would give a three-month notification period. So what I would recommend is that the city council at their first January work session, which will be January 15th, discuss options and see which direction they want to go with staffing. And if there is a change, then provide that notice to the county of a termination date if they want to end the contract sooner. But we will need to continue the contract with the county for a period of time until that decision is made.
Do you want to do that, or you want to do it right here, right now?
No, I like what Bridgette's proposing there. I don't think you can do anything quickly without leaving ourselves an alert, so why not think about it? Why not plan it? Why not have a plan set in motion before you do something? And three months is how long it'll take to probably put anything in motion anyway. So I'd be very happy to just go ahead and adopt that, this contract. It's got a 90-day, what I read is 90 days. You can give notice without any cause whatsoever and walk away from the thing. So I also like the idea of letting the future city council make that decision because they're the ones that are going to live with that decision. They're the ones that have to have a plan in place to go forward. So I would just punt it up to the new commission.
But that would be more than three months because by the time you have the first, you have the new council sworn in, then you have a work session to determine, then you have to have another council meeting to make the action, and then it's three months after that, so you're looking at four months per se?
Or five or six. I don't know what the rush is. I mean, you need a plan.
Mm-hmm.
Are you going to hire somebody? Are you going to contract like you do with engineering services? These things take time to figure out. There's budgeted implications. I don't think you just do it. I think you have to have a plan. It takes six months. It takes six months.
Has there been any issues with the county with that staff member?
No, not that I've been made aware of. But, you know, I guess I haven't specifically asked the question. They have budgeted for this position for the 20 hours in their 2015 budget, so they were planning to continue with the services for another, his services for another year. And they have that in their budget plan for their 20 hours, as we have the 20 hours in our budget plan.
And I'm okay with extending it for 90 days. It's not hard and fast. If we need more time, you can always extend it. I guess I feel this is kind of a joint effort with the county and the city, and I feel that if we take action now, then we've left the county out because this is a shared agreement. And we're not going to know what the county is going to determine until December 17th.
To what date?
December 17th.
December 17th. I thought you said November 17th. That's why I just asked.
Yeah.
What's December 17th?
That's the county board meeting where they would act on this amendment as well.
To do the same thing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Joyce is not here, so I don't know. I think I'm in favor of giving him three months, the first three months, myself. But it'd be nice to know what the county's going to do.
In speaking with the county administrator and county planning environmental services director, you know, they have that in their budget, and they were planning to proceed, and they didn't think there would be any issues with this amendment.
Were they a little surprised that there wasn't an ending date?
Yeah, I mean, we were all working under the assumption that it was normal contract language, that it discontinued unless either party terminated. And so when we dug it out and really looked at it closely, you know, that's when we, they drafted the amendment for consideration.
I guess I would be okay with saying that I would terminate after the three months. That would give staff three months to look and decide. Council can decide at the beginning of the year what they want to do.
If we terminate the contract in three months.
No, contract.
If we terminate it in three months and the decision is to continue on with the contract with the county, then I think we might have, you know, a potential.
I don't think you take away one of your options now. We haven't done a study. You could, I mean, when Joyce was talking about it, she listed two things that she wanted to look at. One was, we could maybe save money by contracting out. I don't believe we could. I mean, we looked at that with inspection. The cost per hour that we pay for the county is going to be cheaper than if we hire a professional services firm. The other option was, well, maybe we need more of a planner here. Well, we don't have the money for more of a planner here. If we had more money for a planner, I've got better places to spend the money than a planner. So this county option is a very viable option. I don't think you'd take it off the table now until you have something that you, that the council likes better before you burn the bridge behind you.
Okay.
The county makes their decision the 17th. We could have another meeting. There's no big deal. We could have another meeting, and Joyce would be here, we'd have five members, we could talk about it. Right? What difference? Anybody going out of town?
If you're going to have another meeting, I am.
True.
I don't know what the hurry is. I really don't. I mean, has anybody brought up and said that he isn't doing his job? Are we failing? Is the county in trouble? I mean, I don't understand the urgency here. And I certainly don't understand why we want to do this and set the table for the next council. If the next council's got to live with that decision, let's let them make it.
What do you want to do?
Well, then, Trenton, I'll make the motion that we extend the contract with the planner for another three months.
That's not what the contract says. Not that it says a year.
The contract extends it through December, but gives you a three-month termination option is how the amendment is proposed.
I guess I won't go along with that then.
Second?
I'll second.
I'm withdrawing my motion if there's a termination option. I don't think that's, I think that's locking us into maybe people thinking that's the right option without exploring other things. So I wouldn't pass it with a termination option.
You're withdrawing the motion.
I'm withdrawing my motion, yes.
Well, what are you suggesting?
I'm just saying that we extend the contract from January 1st to March 30th with the next council to decide by that time how they're going to go forward.
Well, my problem with that is that Mr. Roberts is immediately going to go look for a job. And the county is going to immediately assume that they have this hard date and have to plan around it. And in de facto, you're putting the hard date, and it's over.
Did you, would you like to use it an open date then?
I think the way that it's worded now, which is it's a further year, and anybody can terminate it with 90-day notice at any time.
The county can terminate it, or we can terminate.
Or we can terminate. It's a good option because once you do have a plan, then all you're doing is basically giving the county 90 days to, for them to come up with a plan.
And they actually, I mean, in my conversations with the environmental services director, they would have preferred a longer termination date, but understood the situation that we were in and were willing to do a three-month termination.
Can I ask Jay a question?
Okay.
As a county employee, is there a union involved for that position?
I'm not sure, but as it would relate to the city, in this contract, the union issue is not relevant. This is a contract for services.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that's on the record on that, how that, if it would affect in any stretch.
And there may be issues for the county in terms of their budgeting and other implications that may arise if the city exercises the three-month out, but that's really an issue for the county and the county board to consider at their meeting. This is really essentially, I think, I think you're talking the same language. The motion was thinking this was a three-month deal. Well, it can be a three-month deal. So it's like a rolling three-month contract that has an end date, that it will continue with that. Termination is an option, is an exercise, but in essence, it's kind of in the nature of a 90-day moving contract as it works towards the end of the year. Or it could be if the council chose to terminate it.
How would you suggest we make the motion?
I think the motion, what's been presented by staff is the motion, is the first amendment. So a motion to approve the first amendment to the contract as presented in the packet would authorize extending that period to the end of 2015 with the reservation to be able to terminate it with 90 days' notice.
Wasn't the original contract a year notice?
Yes.
So we're changing that for, at this moment, the county could come back with the year notice. I mean, we don't know what they're going to put in there. They could say, well.
Then we'd have to bring it back to the rest.
So can you turn around and make a motion contingent on the county if not its termination?
I don't think I want to make it contingent on the county.
I'm asking the lawyer the question.
You could, but it is contingent on the county approving it anyways because if the board doesn't approve the agreement, there is no agreement. So in essence, your action is contingent on them approving it as well. They'd just come back to council for us, too.
Well, then I'll go back to my original motion and say that I would, I'd make the motion that we approve the first amendment to the contract as written by staff.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Doesn't pass.
So now, where are we at?
Contract was terminated on December 31st.
No, we won't. We'll call, we'll call a special meeting to bring it up, we'll have five members to see what happens then. We'll go on to the next.
I would be willing to say, would anybody be willing to agree to three months at the end of March?
So.
No.
I just don't know how long the process would last. I just don't know.
So essentially, we're going to be without planning.
That's why I'm willing to say. That's why I said, when I was talking, I was saying three months, the end of March. That gives three months. But that would also be more fair to that employee or to that, you know, contracted person, that at least there's a knowing of when, instead of, I heard that there's stress not knowing what's going to happen, when it's going to happen. At least at that time, you know how to plan your life.
Yeah. And his plan is going to be to find another job tomorrow. So we will be probably without services in January, even if you give a three-month extension on it. I mean, that's what I would do. I mean, I don't think anybody here, if they knew they had 30, 90 days and they're out of a job, what do you do?
You start looking.
You go, oh, yeah. Is that what we want? We want to be without? At least the process the county put forward is, I think it gives the city more options to go forward with. And I think the first amendment was drafted by the county, wasn't it? So at least at a staff level, you'd like to presume that staff supports it because they're the ones that drafted it. Of course, you can't tell what the county board is going to do, but I would think that staff would be supportive of it. And if they don't, it takes too much anyway, so it just fails if the county doesn't.
If this, if it fails with the county, does that mean that with this contract that's effective now, that doesn't it just get extended year after year, or it's, the language is, then it's dead in the water?
Yeah, there is no automatic renewal language in the existing contract. That's, I think, what's, what the party's believed to be the case, but it doesn't automatically renew. It has a hard termination date of December 31, 2014. So as of 1-1-2015, in the absence of an agreement, there will be no agreement between the city and county.
Would that mean that the county would also not have a planner then?
That's not fair either.
Well, I think the county would have a 40-hour planner that they intended to have be a 20-hour city planner, and that would be the conversation.
They'd take it full-time.
Well, I don't know that they, in the conversations I've had, I don't know if they have the budget. They've budgeted for 20 hours for him.
So we're actually, in a way, making, could be making the decision for the county with, at this point, without their input.
To me, the county makes the county's decision. We make our own decision. That's just me, my thinking.
Well, we could do what Teresa says, do the 90 days. If a new council came in, they could change that with a motion. Three votes, correct? No?
They could, sure, yeah. A future council could do that.
And then the new council could change it anyway.
Could request the county extend the contract.
Pardon?
If that's the decision that the new council would make, they could request that the county extend the contract.
That way, that way, we're on record for the county board. They know where we're sitting, and if the new council wants to change it, so be it. That doesn't tie it in. That would work. No reason why it wouldn't work.
Well, I think that's better than.
Than the alternative. Well, it's better than the alternative.
And I don't like the idea of just terminating it at the end of this year. That's not fair to the employee either or to the contracted person.
If we have it for 30 days, can we also put in there a contingency if we need to extend it beyond?
I think you said 90 days.
90 days?
Yeah, I said three months.
90 days.
Can we put a contingent in there that we extended if we haven't made a decision in 90 days?
If we haven't made a decision in 90 days, then there's something wrong with us.
I don't think that's necessary.
I mean, we're going to be having a work session. That's going to be one of the first things on there, I'm assuming, so.
Okay, so your motion.
Your new board could do that.
Your motion is to do.
I didn't make a motion yet. I'm just talking.
Okay, but your suggestion then was we extend it just for 90 days, period.
90, 91, whatever the end of the third month is. Isn't March 31?
Extend it through March.
31, yeah.
31.
So, yeah, 90 days.
Anybody want to make that a motion?
I'll make that a motion that we extend it 30 days.
30?
I'm sorry. See, now you got me thinking 30. 90 days.
I would recommend, too, that you include in the motion, or at least that staff can feed to the county, that the purpose of the motion is to allow the new council to visit this issue and take it up when they're seated to soften that circumstance, so the county board doesn't.
I will add that to my motion with the appropriate language.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Okay, all right. Then economic, let's see what we have.
Just minutes.
EDA, there's the minutes. Park Commission, we have the minutes, and then we have the sales of park land. Nate, please.
Mayor and council, before you tonight, here is a, basically, an update on the ability to sell city-owned park lands. Park Commission reviewed some of the existing, basically, some of them, all the existing city park sites, looked at potential sites we could possibly sell to try to, if lands aren't being used, use that revenue to be placed into the development of other park sites. The commission went through all those, identified a few sites that they thought they might want to take a little further look at. We obtained a legal opinion from the city attorney on the different park sites, and got a brief overview on here. Basically, it says if the lands are received through park dedication or statutory dedication, that you cannot sell those lands. That would need to go through the vacation process and revert back the original dedicator. The lands are purchased with park dedication funds. An example of that would be Williams Park. The funds would be used to purchase, funds used to purchase that would need to go back in the park dedication fund. Any surplus funds could go into the general fund. Any lands that were purchased with general fund dollars, that would be Chilson, the Chilson Lot, which is where the trailhead is at, just to the north there, or El Central Park. Those two pieces of land were purchased through general funds, so those could be sold. And as far as if you had a piece of land that was acquired through tax forfeiture down in Kate's Estates subdivision, there's a few parcels that were acquired there. Public use restrictions would place on those, so we cannot sell those. So pretty much all said and done, it looks like the only lands that you could sell would be the Williams property, Central Park, or the Chilson Lot. The Park Commission reviewed this report at their last meeting, and they made the recommendation to take no further action. So looking for discussion or questions from the council.
Any legal view, point of view on this?
No, I think Nate's staff report does a good job in summarizing the various categories.
I was there, I mean, I was, I'm on that as the advisor for that, and the Parks Commission did a really good job. I know that wasn't what they wanted to do, but they, they sat down, they put up all this stuff. We looked at every, pretty much every single piece of land the city owned like that. It was in this bucket, and they came up with a list that we could have done something with, but like, say, almost all of those were statutory dedication, so.
Okay.
And I'd just keep an open land rather than we give it back to the developer, so.
Sure, okay.
We would like a motion to accept the Park Commission's recommendation if that's the direction you want to go.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion on it? Anyone? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Water and light, there's nothing. Public works, there's nothing. Fire department, vehicle purchase, DNR vehicle.
At the last meeting I was at, there was council member Orchard had mentioned DNR or used military vehicles. It happened last week. We were notified that we had requested several times for a purchase of used DNR vehicles or used military surplus vehicles. We, I sent in with the packet, four or five different vehicles that they had for sale, ranging from 2001s to 2004s. Three of the firefighters went up last Friday to take a look at them. There was one that they thought would improve our wildland suppression vehicle that we have. We have a 1984 grass rig that's marginal on safety issues. The used vehicles that they have up there, the one that they thought would fit our best needs was a 2004, or a 2004 Ford F-350. It was the white one that's listed in the packet. I believe it has like $78,000 on it.
Number four.
Number four, could be. Thank you. They have it for sale for $6,500. If the DNR, that's the auction list. If the DNR sells it to fire departments, they give a 30% discount, which would bring it down to $4,550. About $4,200 in, you know, painting it. It's a white truck paint, you know, fire department red, and adding safety lights, optocom, the safety equipment that we have on it. That's about $4,200, so it would put it at about $8,750, somewhere in there.
Kevin, does that include putting the tank into?
There's a, it, they had some surplus slide-in units they looked at. They had one that could go with it. Again, it's a, the vehicle, the DNR, has used its service, so it's moved out of their fleet because of the age and the equipment that are on it. It's usable. They had a slide-in unit. If we purchased this vehicle, we could use it, but I would, you know, in the future, be requesting a new slide-in unit to put in it that's up-to-date and more, more modern equipment that's on it, but would be in usable condition.
What'd you say the total would be with the repairs?
There's no really necessary repair. It would be, you know, painting it to match the rest of our fire department vehicles, and then adding, it's a DNR truck, they don't have emergency lighting on it, they have yellow flashers on it, so adding our, the fire department, emergency lights and optocom on it would put it to about $8,750.
Can Richard explain where he would have gotten the, between $6,000 and $8,000 that he has in the next page, where he got, would get the funds from?
Yeah, we've finished 11 months of the 12-month budget cycle, and the expectation is that we will be, our revenues will exceed forecast by somewhere between $12,000 and $20,000. So that would be.
A little bitty flush front.
Not much. About 5%, 6%, right? Not out of 3 million, 3 million 9. 5% be about 150, 180,000, I think.
I have another question that's not including the, we had, we were getting money from the bond from Ekumen.
That's correct.
And there was 20,000, and we said that we would allocate approximately 10,000, at least that was the concept.
Right, and that is in your 2015 budget.
Correct.
As a revenue and as an allocation.
Okay, and I guess, I know that when that was brought up, council member Bloomquist and myself had said, if there was money left over to have it go to the fire department, is that possible to be able to use that for the second vehicle?
That's a council decision.
The, they don't have a second vehicle. They had several there, but they, they would only allocate one per fire department. So our request to get two vehicles wasn't accepted. They only have one vehicle available for us.
Okay. Try?
Yep, thank you.
And it has a slide-in unit at, now?
There, it doesn't, but there was a used slide-in unit that was available there that if we purchased the vehicle, they would allow us to have that unit, which is, again, an upgrade from what we have.
At additional cost?
No.
No, that comes with it.
Yeah.
And that's usable, workable?
The motor on it, we don't know. We tried pulling on it, and it was frozen, but there could be water in the pump. We don't know the tank leaks.
It was outside, it could be frozen.
We don't know the tank leaks. It's just something that they said we could have. It's just something that they said we could have, so we have to check it all.
You have nothing else, you've got some scrap to sell.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and pick up this vehicle.
Second to that?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion?
Well, I wish we could get you something new. We keep getting you old, and this is ten-plus years, so.
If we didn't pay more in principle and interest, we would probably have been in that position to do that. But we aren't. So, any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, done. Good. Hope it works off time for you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, building. Okay, resolution for the final budget.
Yes, you have before you the resolution that we reviewed in detail, the budget and overview last Thursday at the work session in the public hearing. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
I think we beat this to death and squeezed every nickel we can. I'm comfortable with making a motion that we adopt this lobby as detailed in 091-12-08-14.
Okay, the other motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, before we call for the vote, does anybody here want to ask Richard anything about the budget? Okay, anyone, any discussion amongst us? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's done. You got a financial report, Richard wants?
Yeah, again, as I mentioned, we're sitting at the end of November, and, and revenues are about on plan. And with the tax receipts and other LGA that we should receive at the end of the month, will be, I believe, slightly over, over the revenue plan. Our expense plan through, through eleven months, we're at eighty-five point eight percent, and we've used ninety-one point five seven percent of the time. And when you add accruals back into that, I would expect that we should be very close, marginally under perhaps, but very close to, to the expense budget.
Any questions for Richard on that? Anyone? Okay.
Legal?
I've got nothing in addition unless anyone asks questions.
Anything for you? Okay. All righty, notices and communications, Richard, anything?
I just, I just want to, our Facebook is getting even more popular. We're getting closer to the two fifty, we're at two forty now. And we had two hundred seventy-nine people look at the post about this skating rink being open. So, obviously, that's where people are thinking they want to get on that, so their kids do. That's, that's even more than we have for people who like the site, so.
Okay, with that, my public comment, please raise your hand to be recognized. Please state your name and address for the record. This section is for the express purpose of addressing concerns of city services and operations that shall not be used to clarify individual views for political, political purposes. Statements made during public comment are the, are the opinions of the individual making the comment. The comments made by individuals during public comment do not represent the official position of the city council, individual council members, or city staff. The city council is not responsible for false, inaccurate, or misleading comments received during public comment. When inaccurate information is presented, a city will attempt to clarify information and provide accurate information. With that, anybody wanted, anybody want to make some public comments? Come up, step up to the podium and state your name and your address. Anyone? Anybody want to speak? Okay. Then, unfinished business, anybody anything? New business, anyone? Okay. Mayor and council, upcoming agendas, Bridget.
The upcoming agendas are in your packet for your review. If there's anything that you would like to see on the upcoming agendas, just give me a call, let me know.
Brent, we don't need to call. No, we're, we're viewing.
Can we put on the January fifteenth, the discussion about the planner?
It's already on there.
Oh, I...
Planning staffing.
Oh, shoot.
Okay. Beat you to it.
Beat you to it. Anything else? Okay, then the next thing is commission appointments.
In your packet, you have applications received for the various commission vacancies. We have one vacancy on each of our commissions this year. Parks, Trails, and Open Space Planning Commission and Water and Light Commission. Those are three-year terms, and the Economic Development Authority is a six-year term. And there's multiple applications in your packet from individuals interested in those various commissions. On your table, there are also two letters that, from applicants that wanted those letters attached to their applications that were included in your packet. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you guys to give the appointments to the various commissions.
And the first one, and here on twelve B, is Parks and Open Space.
Well, I'll make a motion that we appoint Lori Warner to the Parks, Trails, and Open Space, since at this point, we only have on all of our commissions, one woman, I think. We need some more women on our commissions.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second to that one? Motion dies for lack of a second.
I'll make a motion for Tessa Hill.
Okay, is there a second to that? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Well, it's my turn. I'll make a motion for Charlie.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay. And just because, not because Charlie hasn't done a good job, he's been there for a long time. I just feel there should be more women on.
Would that be sexist, though?
That's, well, that's her, that's her opinion. That's, she's entitled, she's entitled to her opinion. Okay, Planning Commission.
I would make a motion that we appoint Robert Walz to the Planning Commission position. I see that he has. I was very surprised, I didn't know about his background in, in planning. He has been, twenty-two years, a county official as Director of Planning. So, I think he would be a great addition to the Planning Commission because of his background. I think that sometimes when they have questions about, about planning ordinances, they would have someone on the Planning Commission that they could ask.
Okay, motion made, is there a second? Is there a second?
I als, okay.
Is there a second? Oh, motion dies for lack of a second. Okay, anybody else?
I'll make that motion for Tom Burkhart.
Okay, is there a second to that one?
I'll second.
Okay.
I have...
Any discussion?
I have, I'm a little concerned with the appearance that husband and wife are on city council and on the Planning Commission. I think that sends the wrong kind of message that we're giving one particular family more authority on commissions and councils. I've also, at some times, I have heard Tom say how he feels, and then that council meeting's Joyce said the very same words. So, I don't, I think that's, that's discour, that's disappointing to me that when he, when she was elected, that he didn't resign. I think it would have been better. I think having, we have enough people in town that we don't have to be to the point where we have to have a husband and wife on the commission and on the council.
You know, I have, I have concern about that same issue, but the fact that Joyce was elected with her husband already on in a sense says that the town was okay with that. So, you know, even though I do have issues with that, but.
I would guess, I would, I would probably, if you asked people in town who's on the Planning Commission, I bet almost ninety-nine percent of the time, they wouldn't know. So, if they're voting to put her on, knowing that he's on the Planning Commission, I don't think that's a valid reason.
Well, we got a motion made and seconded, any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Okay, water and light.
I'll, I'll make a motion for Matt Falk. I have, I have nothing against Mr. Hall's, but the fact that, that he has family working there and stuff, I think is, is such a bad appearance.
Wait a minute, you just want to put Tom Burkhart on?
I know.
So...
That's, it's a whole different...
But in my mind, I'll tell you why it's different. It's different because the voters got to see that and still made a choice. And the fact that, that the voters didn't bother looking up, you know, that's shame on them, the voters, but they, they did take that choice.
I still don't think that's a fact.
The other thing is that I don't believe that, that Tom is getting paid a lot of money to be on this, whereas Mr. Hall's sibling, not sibling, he's a stepson, is getting paid and stuff. And Mr. Hall's in a position of authority over that. That's, to me, a lot more...
Actually, it would be, he doesn't hire him, but they do, he is supervised by Mark rather than the commission.
I know. That's a commissioner, you know, that law's commissioner, that's, I've been in private business, I know how that works. So, based on that reason alone, I'll recommend Mr. Falk.
Okay, motion's made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
I guess we, I guess I'm a little disappointed in this council that they can't apply family relationships in one instance than they do with another. We do supervise the Planning Commission, we do appoint them.
Well, we're talking about this.
So, it's, it's still the same thing, it still looks like...
I haven't seen a perfect candidate yet, it's all balance. And in this case, the balance comes the other side.
Well, I can have my opinion, and that's my opinion.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Okay, Economic Development Authority.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Dennis Johnson to the EDA authority. Dennis has been a longtime resident, he has had a business for as long as I can remember. That has been a successful business, and I think we should give other people an opportunity to be on commissions as long as we have another person that has applied.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Anybody else?
I'll make a, a motion to have Bob Street appointed to the EDA.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that's done. Okay. Rush Line update.
You have in your packet, the last packet that we got from the Rush Line. The one thing that people need to know is that the Met Council decided, I mean, we, we've got, we convinced them we'd need the service from Forest Lake to Lino Lakes, because they were going to cut that out. They found out there's enough riders, yes, you can have that. But what they have now done, instead of a bus leaving Forest Lake, going down to Columbus and going to Minneapolis and going to St. Paul, they've now got one bus going from Forest Lake down to Lino Lakes and Columbus.
Is that still running, is this?
I think that's the one they want to get rid of. They're going to do what, they're going to get, they're going to have a park and ride in Hugo and a park and ride in Lino Lakes, so that's where the buses are...
Running, that's been going for about three years.
Yeah, they're probably going to...
Or maybe longer.
They're probably going to cut that out. They, it feels, they feel like it's going out and coming back in, and it's not efficient.
No, no ridership?
No, it's not, the problem right now is with the one bus, there's so many people on there, they're standing. So, they are, they are keeping track of comments from people, because they took surveys, and the people on the, taking the bus don't like it that there's only this one bus going down.
So, they got a full bus, but because they're standing, they're going to get rid of the bus. Now it's government in action.
Well, I kind of feel it's, it's more like a compromise for the Met Council. They, they couldn't eliminate us from Forest Lake, or from Forest Lake down to Lino Lakes, so they're making this adjustment.
That doesn't make any sense.
I know, it doesn't make any sense.
Doesn't make an ounce of sense.
No, it doesn't, but that's what they did. There are a lot of unhappy people, and they are keeping track of people's comments.
Any questions for Kathy on this? Okay, thank you. I hope that gets fixed.
Well, you do, too.
I got customers that ride that bus, they love it.
I know, they all love it. I, I intend, I do know someone who rides the bus, and I am going to get some statements from her, because she's been riding it, I think, since the bus started.
And if you're in law enforcement, you ride free.
Maybe, do you have to stand?
I don't know. I don't know about that one. Okay, with that, now we go to recess?
If I could have just two minutes...
You go, go right ahead.
Before we go into recess into our closed session, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Lindquist and Councilmember Johnson for their time and dedication and leadership that you've provided to the city over the last few years. And I have a certificate of appreciation for you, and just wanted to say thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
It's a pleasure.
Okay. Now, with that, let me go to, now we go into the recess for the labor negotiations, correct?
Yeah, two closed sessions. The first is to discuss the Teamsters Union contract, and so that'll be closed under Minnesota statutes thirteen D point oh-three, to discuss labor negotiations. The second is to go into closed session to do the annual review for the city administrator, so.
Okay, we do this by motion?
Yeah, you should make a motion to close for those two specific reasons.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Recessing as of, as of seven forty-seven, forty-eight. Okay, we shall reconvene to a regular council meeting at eight twenty-eight, yeah, eight twenty-six? Okay, and with that, we're going to, is there a motion on the Teamster Supervisor's contract?
I'll make that motion, that we approve the contract as written.
Okay, second to that?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. And with that, anything else? No, Richard?
No.
No, that's another one, that's right.
We have to do...
Approve the other one.
Review. So, I guess, I'm not sure what else. We need to do a motion to do your review and increases now, correct? That's what the goal is.
Well, salary increases for fifteen were approved a couple months ago.
For the supervisors?
Oh, for the supervisors.
We're talking about you.
But yeah, for me, too. Prior, I'd have to go and look up what month, but you approved the same salary increases for non-bargaining employees as you did for LELS and...
Right.
Forty-niners.
Right.
So, that has already been approved, which was the fourteen and fifteen salary increases. So, it's the one percent, no step.
Right, right. I'm, I'm proposing that we change that.
Okay.
And my proposal is that you've already been... And my proposal is that you've already been, you've already been approved for 1% COLA that went back to January 1st, 2014. I would also propose, and I'm trying to, the reasoning behind this is to line you up more with the supervisor contract. And I would propose that we give you a 3% increase in lieu of a step that they have here. We give you a 3% increase that goes back to July 1st, 2014. That we also give you a 1% COLA increase effective January 1st, 2015, and another 3% July 1st, 2015. I'm assuming that that would be better than what we previously had done.
Yeah.
Because you don't really have steps, do you?
I'm on the salary chart, just like any other.
You are? Well, then I want to amend that. I didn't think you were.
Yes.
And you're not at the top of your step.
No.
Then I would, then what I would like to do then is to just line her up with this contract. 1% a step, July 1st, 2014, 1% a step, July 1st, 2015. So, she's on the same advancement as the supervisors that we just approved. I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Post? Okay.
Well, we acknowledge that you have been doing more than a city administrator.
You executed the goals we laid out in the, you know, we sat down, did the review last year.
Thank you.
We did everything we asked for. So, the next council will assume, will let out your next goals.
Motion to adjourn.
No, we didn't approve or not approve the.
Yes, we did.
We did?
Oh, crap.
I'll make that motion.
That's all we did.
Yes, you did.
I missed a lot of things.
Trent and Kathy maybe.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are done.
Have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Free at last.
We're done, we're done.
Oh, you're still on until Kirsten gets sawed.